Welcome to the Village Board Work Session of Monday, January 11. So first up on our agenda is discussion with Susan Favate of BFJ Planning, with an update on the floor area ratio zoning analysis project that we have undertaken to consider the question of whether we should add what's called a floor area ratio to our zoning code. What is your report, Susan Favate?
Do I have the ability, Eric, to pull up the presentation? Or will you guys?
We can make sure. You should be able to share your screen.
Okay, I see it.
Hang on a second.
Okay. Let's see.
We've got it.
Big and orange, right?
It's there, we see it.
Okay, so I'll just skip to that. So we just wanted to start off with what is the overall purpose of the study? I think, I assume that most of you are fully aware of it, but I know that we've been speaking primarily with Peter, Eric, and Robert thus far. So it's a good time to kind of make sure that we're all on board, understand the overall objectives. So really, it's meant to be a very targeted zoning study, looking particularly at the tool of floor area ratio to address some concerns that we've been hearing about new construction in some areas of the village, particularly those that have larger lots. And what's happening is that it's not unique to Pleasantville. It's, we're seeing it not only everywhere in Westchester, but I would say the whole region. And it's that the traditional controls of setbacks, so your front yards, rear yards, side yards, and also coverage are not really sufficient in the current real estate environment to control the bulk of homes. Basically, where traditionally no one ever built to the setbacks, people are building as much as they can. They're basically maxing out every part of their property. So a lot of communities are finding that they need a few more tools in the toolbox to make sure that they're controlling the bulk of homes and that they're maintaining their character. So, and I'll get into a little bit of the details about FAR and what it is and how we think it might be used here. But the overall elements of the study, it's really three phases. And it's meant to be short, meant to be about six months. We basically started up in November. You know, we've been doing the first part of it with, is a lot of analysis. So we've been looking, really had a lot of numbers. We got a lot of data from Westchester County. We also got some recent new construction data in Pleasantville from Robert Hughes. And we've basically been pulling all that together to understand what your built environment is like. And so we're kind of nearing the end of that process. We're not quite done with it. And we've also started to look, and we will be done with this part soon as well, at what your peers are doing. We know that several communities in Westchester we've worked in and we're familiar with use FAR. And so we're looking at those as well as others that we're aware of to see how they're doing it, what are some pitfalls that we want to avoid. We don't need to reinvent the wheel necessarily if others are using it successfully. And then the next phase will be actually drafting the regulations. We think these will be fairly straightforward, most likely just adding something to the tables, the zoning tables in the single-family zoning districts. And then the final phase is making sure that we, you know, we're obviously abiding by secret, the environmental assessment form. There will be a public hearing as required for any zoning changes. And then we'll work with you all to make any necessary revisions for adoption. This is just a little, very rough timeline. As I said, we kind of got started just before Thanksgiving. We've been doing that planning analysis phase. We're just about done with that. And we'll be putting together a memo, which hopefully we'll have done by the end of the month. And then we'll be spending February actually drafting the text changes. There are no map changes envisioned with this. It's basically just, you know, using the zoning that is in place already in terms of the zoning districts. And then a lot of the latter end of this is sort of dictated by secret timelines. So we'll be doing, you know, the EAF, having the public hearing, and really shooting to wrap up the process by early spring. So we thought it'd be good, in speaking with the village, to really talk about, you know, at a basic level, what is FAR? What is floor area ratio? And primarily, it's a tool to control, you know, not just the placement of a building, but the actual bulk of it. It started out being used mostly in actually commercial and industrial buildings, and has increasingly been used in residential areas as well. I think particularly as more and more home builders started really maxing out, again, as I mentioned. It works in tandem with your height and your setbacks, as well as building coverage if you have that. And not all communities have building coverage. You do. So all of these factors have to work together and be somewhat calibrated to each other. Otherwise, maxing out one may require a variance in another. So you might be able to max out your FAR, but then you're hitting some kind of a wall on lot coverage that would require you get a variance. That tells us that they're not properly calibrated. So basically, what it is, is you calculate FAR by dividing the gross area of the lot by, I'm sorry, the gross floor area by the total area of the lot. So it gives you a factor that essentially tells you how big your building can be, how much floor area you can have, square footage. And the higher that factor, the higher, the greater building volume you can have. It does not do anything to control the actual aesthetic. It doesn't dictate one building type or home style over another. And so in that sense, like, I think like most bulk controls, setbacks, coverage and height, it's somewhat of a blunt tool, but it can be very effective in controlling the overall bulk of a home. And you actually already do use FAR. You have it already defined. And you use it in your business districts and industrial districts, as well as a couple of your more multifamily districts.
Sort of an interesting little activity in the history that that's the way it is, right?
Yeah, it's great, great news, because we don't have to sort of create a definition, which can be very challenging to get one that works for the community. But you already have it. So it's really just applying a control that you already use to more areas of the village would be what we're looking at. I have these, these are actually very old diagrams, but I think that they're really effective to kind of show you what FAR really is all about. So you see in the top row of drawings, all of these scenarios have the same FAR. It's a factor of 1, 1.0. And you can see that if you don't have any difference in height, basically, it dictates how much of the lot you cover. So you can cover the whole lot and have one story. If you go to two stories, you're covering half the lot, and so on and so forth. I think in a residential context, that height is pretty much capped. You know, it's two and a half stories. And I can't remember what the numerical value is in Pleasantville. I want to say it's 30 or 35 feet. But that's pretty much constant in all of your single-family zones, as it is in most places. So when the height is constant and you have your setbacks constant, the variable factor would be your FAR. So that would be what would control how much of the actual lot you cover. And you can see that a little bit in the diagram at the bottom, which shows you, and this is showing you the interplay of yards, setbacks, as well as coverage. So your setbacks, your yards, give you your building footprint, which is that dotted line in the diagram. What FAR and coverage also, but I'll explain a little bit why they're different. What those two things do is how much of that footprint you can occupy. So if you had no building coverage and you had no FAR, in theory, someone could build to the setbacks, which I think most people wouldn't want, because if you're looking at only a 15-foot yard, I don't think you'd want to have a building all the way to that level. You actually have building coverage in your single-family zones. But what building coverage does is it only looks at what the actual footprint is on the ground, at the ground. So it doesn't tell you how big your overall house can be. It tells you how big the footprints sort of seen from the air can be, the bird's eye view. And I think why FAR is a little bit more nuanced is that it can be looking at the house as a whole. And you can be looking at things like, what are you including? Are you including the basement? Are you including all of the attic? And you can start to get a little bit more nuance as opposed to just looking at what's happening at the foundation. And so, again, they all have to work together, but they can each be effective. And then when they are put together, they can be most effective. So understanding kind of those basics, the overall approach that we're looking at in Pleasantville is the sliding scale of FAR ratios, floor area ratios, based on lot size. Some communities do it based on the zoning district. Why we like to use the lot size is that if you do it just on the district, you're not capturing an oversized or an undersized lot. So you'd be treating every lot the same in a zoning district. We think that that's not a great approach, because again, it just doesn't recognize, some lots are going to be very small and they're not going to be able to max out. And then other lots, you wouldn't want the same ratio if you have a huge lot. You'd be able to have an enormous, enormous house. So, you know, we're looking at that scale. And again, the numbers have to be kind of correct. We are looking, possibly, we're going to look at some best practices. Some communities exempt undersized lots, which may be a good approach for some of those neighborhoods in Pleasantville that actually predate zoning. A lot of those have non-conforming homes. They're limited in what they can do anyway. And you may not want to impose something that most of them are going to need a variance for anyway. So we're looking at those factors. But the sliding scale method has been used in a lot of your peer communities, Bronxville, Scarsdale, Irmington, and both the town and village of Mamaroneck. We were involved, I believe, in both Mamaronecks and I think Bronxville in helping them craft their floor area ratio controls. But what we're starting with is trying to understand what is in Pleasantville right now. So that's what we've been doing with this data, is we want to use your existing housing stock as our baseline. That will tell us what's out there, basically, what are your existing floor area ratios? And we're going to try to come up with a range and from that, do some calculations to try to figure out, you know, the numbers that will best work. It's not going to capture every home. There may be outliers in the village, there always are. But basically, the intent is to not create numbers that are non-conforming. Anytime you do a zoning change, you want to try to avoid any significant creation of non-conformity. So we're really going to try to base it on what's there in Pleasantville now. And that's where we are in the process right now. So as I said, we're almost done with the data analysis. We're going to be looking at the best practices and sending a memo to the village and then coming up with the actual text changes and the secret process. And I think that was a quick presentation. That's the end of my presentation. But I would be happy to entertain questions, talk a little bit more in detail about anything that anybody would like to hear about.
So that's great. I think that's a really useful intro to all of that. Are the examples of the sliding scale FAR regulations that you referenced similar in, what, did you have three towns there?
Yeah, there's some minor differences. And honestly, I don't have it right in front of me. We've started to look at them. I know that the two or three of them were very, very similar, and I think were probably a good approach. Others kind of mixed and matched the lot size and the zone. So I think, if I remember correctly, one or two communities for the large lot zone, it was based only on the zone. And anything in a different zone, it was based on the lot size. Or that's the way to go. It's, we'd have to look at that a little bit. But, you know, those are the general ways that seem to be done in Westchester when you use a sliding scale. Again, I think some communities have used just the flat-out zoning district. I see that less and less. And I think more communities have gone to the more nuanced version.
Well, especially in a community like ours where you have a significant number of properties in the older areas of the village that are on very small lots.
Yeah.
Obviously, the lay of the land, literally and figuratively, is different than in larger lots like the ones we have that were developed more in the 50s, 60s, and beyond.
Yeah, yeah. And I will say that I sit on my own planning board in my town, and we deal with FAR a ton and have done a lot of recent work. So even though it's not Westchester, I'm bringing a little bit of that experience as well and trying to remember some pitfalls. We liberalized our FAR across the board and didn't calibrate coverage with it. So now we're experiencing a lot of people having to get variances.
Apparently, they didn't ask BFJ.
I have a question about your last point about using the existing housing stock as a baseline. I was just wondering, you know, I understand the motivation to not create situations of non-conformity. But I was wondering about, you know, a couple of the recent developments that have sort of provoked this in the first place. Would those be included in that? Or would those be seen as potential non-conformity?
Well, they're included in the analysis because we wanted sort of the full universe.
Sure.
But I think once you put them all in a giant spreadsheet, it becomes very clear what, that they're outliers. So I think it becomes clear what you are trying to kind of avoid. So it could make those newer ones non-conforming.
Okay. Thanks.
Just to be clear for anyone who's watching.
Yeah.
A pre-existing non-conforming is legal.
Absolutely.
No one's going backwards to say you have to tear down something you built. But it would affect, you know, the potential reuse of a property in the future.
It would affect the ability to add on, especially.
Thank you, that was a very clear presentation.
Yeah. Any other questions from anybody?
Peter, am I allowed to answer your work session? Okay, I have a couple. One is, I know this is for single-family, and I saw you also say we already have it for commercial and industrial. How does it apply to multifamily zoned areas? That's one question. Second is, do you anticipate basement and attic being included or not?
The first question is that I believe, and I don't have all the zoning tables in front of me, but I believe that in your multifamily zones, there already is FAR. So we can confirm exactly which zones have it. But the, most of the single-family zones do not. In answer to your second question, basements and attics, I have to look at the definition again. I believe, and Robert, if jumping and correct me if I'm wrong, I believe that it addresses basements, your current definition. I don't think it addresses attics, because again, single-family homes have not historically been part of FAR in Pleasantville. So that is something that we may want to look at, particularly when you're thinking about building code issues. I know a lot of communities exempt the attic over a certain or under a certain ceiling height, you know, thinking about habitable space. So that there's that balance of, you know, controlling the bulk, but also recognizing that sometimes attics aren't actually even habitable. So you want to, you don't want to be too ownerless on folks. But Robert, I don't know if you have anything to add on basements?
No, I agree. FAR was really developed for the residential, single-family. So it definitely has to be re-looked at. My experience, yes, they look at basements and attics, finish, unfinished, and kind of exempt it, because you're exactly right. Although you want to try to control it, you also don't want to make it unfair for somebody who's, you know, and not trying to make a big house and just happens to have a design that creates a space, and then all of a sudden it goes against them. But I think that has to just be looked at in more detail for our single-family.
And is there a distinction made between a house that is built or already exists with an unfinished basement and/or an unfinished habitable attic when a homeowner comes back to propose to renovate either of those two spaces or both?
The way I've experienced it is if it's unfinished, then in theory, if the regulation is written as such, then it should count toward floor area ratio. For instance, if a community has decided that they're going to count half the basement, but currently, the basement's unfinished, and they don't count unfinished basements. But if it's finished, they count half of it. If you finish your basement, then that should count. Now enforcement of that is another matter. I leave that to Robert. But I do see that a lot where folks finish their basements and no one knows about it until they sell the house. But all we can do is write the regulation and hope that we can enforce it well. But yes, it would aim to capture when you make that kind of a change, because you are increasing the livable floor space in your home.
What would happen, let's say, we implement this, and somebody comes in for an addition, we would now require the architect to provide the floor area for the entire house. Because now the entire house with the addition has to comply. So that's where the non-conformities will come into play, because they might say, well, my house is pre-existing non-conforming. Well, the addition is eclipsing that. You need the variance for that. And then that's their argument to the zoning board.
And does it, is it different, though tangentially, really the discussion of what the definition of a basement is depending on the grade of a property, right?
Yeah, and here's where it can get very complicated. And I think when I looked a little bit at your existing regulations, it seemed fairly clean, which was gratifying. Overly complicated, because you can get very, very into the weeds on what is a basement, you know, how much is above grade, especially when you're thinking about walkout basements. And so we'll look at all of that. I will say, this is meant to be a very, you know, targeted, frankly, small-budget study. So we're trying our best not to get sort of derailed, because, you know, FAR can open up a little bit of can of worms if you want to get very detailed. And I think, you know, something that might, we're thinking about is to, you know, get the regulation in that makes sense and works. And if you want to tweak it later, it's very easy to decide, well, we're not going to include certain areas in FAR, or we are. I'll give you an example. In my community, we decided some years ago not to include front porches, porticoes. We were seeing a lot of that in my community, you know, putting porticoes on the fronts of homes. And I think they had been included. I made the argument, well, that's not actually part of a home's bulk. It's an open porch, and we want that. That's a feature that we would like to see. And unfortunately, the builders have figured out that they can max out their FAR and then slap a porch on the front of it and not need any further variances. And it actually is sort of coming back to haunt us. So that's an example of where you can get really, I would say sometimes lost a little bit, but you can also tinker with it down the road. I think maybe the first step, let's get the FAR in place and numbers that make sense. And if you decide later on that you, you know, you don't want to count as much of the attic, or you want to count more of the attic, or you don't want to count the full basement, but half of it, it's, those kind of changes are very simple to make.
Just in talking to a lot of architects locally, they're a little concerned with this because of, we've never had this issue in the village. It happened to come up, yes, it did. And it could continue because of, you know, development. But we haven't had an architect's concern, because they're very happy with how the village has been. And I think that just adding FAR alone is going to keep.
It's going to be an adjustment, yeah.
I don't think we're going to have issues with getting into the weeds, as you say, because we haven't had a history of projects coming in and really having a problem with the FAR. We haven't had one in particular.
Yeah.
It hasn't been a significant problem today.
I'm a big fan of keeping it simple, if you can. And I think it will be an adjustment for the architecture community. But I will say, if they've been working in Westchester, it will not be the first time that they've seen it.
No, they're happy when they get to Pleasantville, because they don't have to turn up in a minute.
One last thing.
I don't think any of us are envisioning some draconian form-changing venture for much of what goes on here. Just trying to increase the likelihood that we end up with appropriate development that doesn't loom out of scale in comparison to its context.
I think you want to strike that balance and then also not send everybody to the zoning board.
All right. So those are the truisms. Don't send everyone to the zoning board. And almost everything you do in zoning will eventually come back to bite somebody sometime.
We do our best. We can't predict the future totally, but we can try to.
Why not? Come on.
I wish, I wish.
All right. Any other questions for Susan?
If other questions come up, please feel free to filter them through Eric and Peter, and we'll make sure that we address them.
All right. Much appreciated, Susan and Robert. Keep rolling then.
Great. Thank you all. Take care.
And can we post on this website that brief slide presentation you made?
Sure.
Might be helpful to folks, Eric and Norine. Get that up there as backup. All right, great. Thank you.
Thank you all.
They were right on time. We're leaving you three minutes earlier.
I can go get a drink of water. It's perfect.
Thank you, Susan.
Take care. Bye.
All right. Cooley Street.
Yeah, so this item is related to 70 Memorial. They are steaming full, full steam ahead here. They are wrapping up concrete. Robert, have they wrapped up the concrete at this point?
They have one small section of a concrete slab to be poured, and that's it. The whole concrete foundation, three-level parking garage is complete.
And is the rest of the building steel frame, or?
Yes. From this point, Memorial Plaza up will be all steel frame and then infilled with metal studs in the brick and all the finishes and so forth. Main structure will be all steel framing.
Right.
What is the current expected timing to completion?
Very difficult. Developer is very, very specific in particular. He's an outlier. I just had a conversation today with the project manager, and they are trying to be linear and get this done and completed. His son's on a 24-month timeframe, and I'm like, no. He's just a very, very, he's hands-on in every part of the building. So my expectation is, you know, two, 30 months still, when it probably was that. But we're already almost two years in now.
Yeah. I mean, just to be clear, that the, it's a builder who is very, very, very focused on a high-quality job.
I've never seen anything like it.
In impressive ways.
Okay. So, and while we're on the topic too, setting up the steel portion of the structure is going to require a crane B setup. So that's our next item that we're working with the developer on, permitting for that and getting the details on that. And Robert has been in touch with them constantly.
How long will the crane be needed, give or take?
On-site? Six months or more, easy, just for all the steel. It's specific to the steel erection.
Right.
From what I understand, it's pretty sizable. And that's where they're working with the steel company as far as, and the crane company as far as the logistics. The ones organized will sit down and discuss it and then present it to the village as far as how they're actually going to implement it.
Right. Is it clear yet where it would be located?
They have, there was a little discussion back and forth. There's a location on, if standing on Memorial facing the property to the left and then to an area on the right, on their property, not on anyone else's property. But they've allocated two areas there that they've compacted, brought in gravel, and had, you know, previous conversations on. One will be the area on the right closest to the post office. That'll eventually be the walk-through. That's been structurally built by the engineers designing it as well to handle the cranes. So they might have two, they might have one, it might be reset up. So that's the logistic that they're still going through with regards to, you know, being a pretty big building and trying to actually access all points of it.
Right. So reverting back to Cooley Street, right now, they had been operating under a license agreement, which allowed them to store some construction material, cars, the like. Now they've cleared that area. They can actually use the underground parking lot to park cars. But now the question is the through traffic. Cooley has not a formal two-way roadway, but some folks tend to use it as such. But since it is still going to be an active construction site for the foreseeable future with trucks coming in and out, we think it's in everybody's best interest to stop through traffic. It really hasn't been utilized for through traffic in several months. We don't see a lot of activity back there for obvious reasons. But in terms of public safety, we think for a duration of several months to stop the ability for cars to get from one side of Cooley to the other through that area. So we're working with the village attorney on how best, what mechanisms to use, probably going to be another license agreement. And we'll just ensure that it moves through the appropriate channels. But we did want to get the board updated on that.
Okay.
All right.
What's the status of the lot usage that they were using? Those spots, is that still ongoing for a lot longer? Or what's up with that?
We have a license agreement in place that I believe runs through June of 2021. I mean, it's revocable, so at any time, we can tell them they have to go. I think we need to give them 10 days' notice, but it runs for the next six months.
I mean, we're, all of us, certainly the developer, are benefiting enormously from the fact that activity in the Memorial Plaza lot is dramatically reduced because of the whole COVID mess. fact that activity in the Memorial Plaza lot is dramatically reduced because of the whole COVID mess. So as I've said in the past, there ought to be some benefit to it and maybe that's at least a little one. So, I mean, it certainly is. I've been less disruptive to, to the community and also more efficient for the developer. So advantages on both sides.
All right. And that's it. Thank you, Robert. Thanks for the time.
I'm good night.
Thank you, Robert. Much appreciated. All right. So next was police reform update. And here is my report and then others can chime in with theirs. As you know, we have scheduled for this coming Thursday at 7:30 PM, the next public forum and the subject of that is a police training and the complaint review process. And then two weeks thereafter, on Thursday, September 28th, the last of what we had lined up as our big, big Zoom forums, an event on the 28th focused on community policing practices, general communications and outreach to various communities. So in the meantime, as you recall from our last discussion, there's a bunch of folks have been, there's sort of several things going on. One is folks have been interested in the chance maybe to dig into specific subjects in greater detail. And others certainly, you all can speak to this, but certainly I've had some feedback that, hey, you know, I, I'm kind of, I'm interested in this subject. I'd like to dig into it. I'm not really looking to be in a big public forum about it. You know, sort of the, the commentary that I have gotten and doubtless all of you have at various points of, hey, you know, could we have a cup of coffee or sit in somebody's living room and kick something around? Certainly no intent to, to drive anything subterranean, but instead to reflect the fact that it's just a little bit of a difficult environment for folks to really have a an extended conversation on some subject in, in a Zoom webinar. So my take on that is as follows. First off, I think it's, it's most important for us to be clear to everybody that our mission for this report, we have to file in March, at least by April 1st, the state is to have a, a set of recommendations that are clear and that we have coalesced around and that are pretty immediately actionable. And I think, you know, some of those things are, are starting to become clear in our conversations. And one of them, for example, is, is our data collection. The chief has reported that he and his team have been looking at different software solutions. Not primarily driven by this need, but by the fact that the current provider of the software we use has morphed in various ways that might suggest a different solution. And so, you know, those things are in play, but the piece I wanted to make clear to everybody, as I think I have, but in the meetings, but not everybody is, is, you know, completely clear is that what we're really trying to do here is have some very specific, very actionable things to staple in the corner by April 1. But in the course of this, to have set up relationships, communication paths, subjects of inquiry that continue on beyond and, and not only allow us to dig into subjects that are of concern to people in a more comprehensive way, but also engage us and the police and the community and the various communities and constituents we represent in some new ways ongoing. So with that in mind, I can report that I've had a couple of conversations with people at some length and I think they've been, you know, really pretty useful and productive. Clearly there is at least one diversity, equity and inclusion group that I think warrants some time on the part of, of a couple of us to really make sure that what they're thinking or their concerns get fed into all of this. Whether that turns into immediate recommendations or turns into stuff on our list we're working on. I will say I, that's the primary group I, I have heard from. And I am completely open, as I, I know all of us are, to, to engaging anybody in any group. What are you all hearing?
I'll talk since nobody else is. I'll, I'll be honest and I'll say I'm, I'm a little bit behind. I've, I've spoken, I've had communication with a number of people starting back in September, I think. So there are a few people that I want to sort of tap for specific issues that they have expressed a desire in, you know, specifically going into one area. But between the insurrection and homeschooling or I'm a little bit behind, but.
The world keeps happening, it seems. Why won't the world slow down and let us do what we need to do?
We have a daily insurrection here.
I hear you.
I guess these are, sometimes I regret not having little kids and maybe at the moment I, I should be glad of it.
COVID is not the time to regret that.
Everything's life choices now.
Really not. And I apologize to Abby. I know Abby's out there and I was going to give her some more information and I apologize to you because I'm just a little bit behind on it.
Okay. All right. Anybody else have anything they add to that? A different slant on it? A comment concern?
I think a couple of the areas that have come up that seem to be of interest so far, and we'll find out more as these next two calls come on, but areas I think could, could, could be useful for these small groups focused on a particular issue would be community policing, use of force and complaints and reporting.
Yeah.
Right. Community, certainly community policing, which is an upcoming topic is something that, you know, some of the people have really.
I mean, we've heard from a bunch of folks about the idea of visible officers, officers on foot, all of that. They're, the chief is well equipped to work us through what we've done in the past, what's worked, what hasn't, what the implications are, what the, what the budget implications and the operational implications of all of that. So I think I, I do think what I just, in the course of a couple of more in-depth conversations that I've had, I just think it was useful for people to gain a level of comfort that they deserve to have and that we intend to give them. That it, it isn't the next, you know, 11, 12 weeks that is their last opportunity to weigh in on any of these concerns. You know, I think lots of good stuff has been said and one of the good things that have been said is that lots of folks have been very impressed by the care, humanity and professionalism of officers they have interacted with. But that's good news, but I mean, that not everybody's experience is the same and we all have problems and we all have ways to do better. And clearly the events of the last year in our nation make, make it clear that at least on the local level, we have the best chance to, you know, set up these communication patterns that you know, I'm sure we've not been as good at in the past as we need to be. And that's partly what we're trying to do here. So anyway, my thought is we have this meeting, that's Thursday at 7:30 on the training and, and complaint review process. And then two weeks later, we have the meeting on community policing outreach and the like. All of those, as we already know, are, are Zoom recorded and Zoom transcripted. So the recording is great for folks who are interested in paying attention after the fact or going back and hearing something they missed. The transcripts have been helpful to me in just kind of sifting through the stuff to try to pull out, well, what were really the, the issues that got brought up? And by the way, so we're going to collide into February, as we'll hear soon from Eric and Noreen, with kickoff of our budget review for the coming fiscal year that begins June 1. And we may end up with a circumstance where, we will end up with a circumstance where we have some weekly work sessions instead of, of second and fourth Monday of the month. And although we always do that for the budget, I think we're going to need some of that time to sift through how we want to start to shape these recommendations with the thought that by towards the end of February, we ought to have some draft recommendations that we reflect back to the constituencies that have talked to us and say, hey, you know, here, here's what's come out of this so far. Here is what we're imagining at the moment in draft to be actionable recommendations. Here are some of the things that aren't in the recommendation list, but based on all of our discussions warrant further discussion down the road. And then maybe some big picture things as well that kind of hover over all of this as we go forward. So that seem reasonable to all?
Yep.
Right? Chief, you want to add anything to that?
No, I think that's, that's a great approach and I appreciate the thoughtfulness with which we're, we're moving forward in this process. So thank you.
Well, likewise, and we appreciate your support in all of this as well. So.
I've gotten a lot of good feedback about your presentation in the last session. So, thank you.
I, I probably ran a little longer than I wanted to. So I'm going to try to sort of get through it a little quicker next time. So this way people feel like they have time to go back and forth, but that was good. I'm glad. I, and I hope it, it's, it's easier for me to, to think through the process with a PowerPoint to kind of work off of it. So I hope it was, I'm glad it was helpful.
Well, I think an important part of this process is just educating ourselves and the community as a whole, right? I think people really appreciate being walked through how these things work.
Especially, you know, some of these subjects are subjects that, you know, everybody knows in some abstract way are out there like use of force policies, but it's, it's, I think great for people to say, well, okay, you know, it turns out there's really a carefully thought out policy that guides all this. And, you know, here's our opportunity in, in this moment to look at and say, well, should we tweak that a bit further? But, you know, I think having that document, a couple of people have said to me that they didn't watch the whole presentation or missed it entirely and found that document to be very helpful, whereas listening through the whole Zoom video is kind of a big commitment. So that's it. We're, we're trying, like life itself, we're trying to curate, curate information to deliver it to folks in, in a digestible form and in a, in a manner that allows busy people to pay attention to the core points. So.
Thank you, Chief President.
All right. Do you have a sense, Chief, of how this process is going in our neighbor communities? Not Pleasant, Briar Cliff, Newcastle, for example?
I mean, everyone's, everyone's different, the different approaches, you know, literally from what I've heard, every municipality, not just neighboring, but throughout the county has really sort of, you know, everybody said it was obviously something that was brand new. So everyone had the opportunity to start from scratch and, and it it very much mirrored sort of what was important to those communities as far as who participated, how they participated, what, what the formula was, you know, obviously everybody sort of had the, had to do it remotely, but, but, you know, a, a lot of similarities with a couple little, some, some minor tweaks here and there as far as participation, but.
Right. Well, so when those reports are all issued for the April 1 deadline to the state, it'll be interesting to take a look at what other communities come up with because as reported, we're not done and other folks may have stuff that will help us. Do you have yet a sense for when the results will appear from the county group looking at the academy?
I, I don't. I actually, and I can, I can find out a little bit more about that. I do know some people who are kind of working behind the scenes, you know, they, they did sort of, because they had so many different directions to go at the county level, they did break off into some of the subcommittees and smaller groups. So, you know, it was such a large group, they kind of almost had to. So many stakeholders. So I can, I can try to find out exactly where that's going, but.
All right. Any further comment or, or any comment from the member of the public? Happy to hear from you in work session here. If someone had something to say. Raise your hand if you care to. All right.
Then Mr. Mayor, I know the chief had wanted to discuss the idea of quarterly updates to the board.
Right.
Police operations. And to feel out, I mean, I think the chief has a good idea of what he brings forward, but I'll also get feedback from the board members about what they expect to see.
All right. That's great. What are your thoughts, Chief?
Yeah, just briefly, it, it seemed like it would be something that that might be helpful and that the board members might be interested in. Maybe I, I just sort of envisioned a quarterly meeting, whether it's at a work session or at the, at the board meeting, where it's a dialogue. It's not necessarily, you know, I would, I would try to present on the topics or the issues that had been presented to me as, as the issues of interest, but then just sort of make myself available to sort of speak through if we had, you know, any, any major events or if we had any serious concerns. Updates on everything from, you know, use of time, overtime, planning stages, special events, you know, whatever it was that the, that the board kind of wanted to sort of walk through, but just to sort of open up a a regularly scheduled dialogue between the members of the board and the department as far as what they want to see going forward and, and answer any questions they might have.
So I think that's great.
The only, the only proviso I put on there is obviously it's easier to find out information going forward rather than going backward. So if there's anything, you know, maybe over the next few weeks, if everybody wants to sort of think about it and think about what are certain things that they might want me to start tracking and keeping, keeping my, you know, keeping the numbers at my fingertips. So this way it's easier to, you know, to, to provide that information when it's, when it's called for.
That's, that sounds great. Anybody have comments now or?
We, when we make traffic stops, do we note the, the origin of the, the driver's license as well as the the race of the person being pulled over?
So that is legislation that takes in effect at the state level at the end of the year. So at this point, we do not currently collect demographic information on drivers of traffic stops that we perform. We know we're going to have to do that. We're expecting that the state is going to at least at some point try to push out some sort of collection device for that, whether it's through one of the interfaces that we use to record the tickets or something else. At this point now, we really only use that interface when we actually issue a summons. So if an officer pulls over 10 cars and only writes one ticket, then the system only recognizes the one ticket. So we're discussing now internally what, what's the best way to go about sort of preparing for that information. We know it's going to be, it's going to be required and we want to sort of prepare ourselves for that when the time comes.
Okay.
Is that for the purposes of collecting data or what, what is the rationale behind that?
So the thought process is just to, for, you know, for the idea of making sure that, that we are enforcing traffic laws and committing traffic stops within the, without consideration for things like age, gender, race, those types of issues. You know, if we, if we have the baseline of the data of what we're doing, then it's a lot easier to decide if, if we're doing things the right way or if maybe there's some other issues that need to be addressed.
Right. So going back to your question of quarterly reports, I guess what comes to mind for me, and this is a sort of maybe slightly vague notion, but I, I'd be curious to sort of learn more about the police department's perspective on the community, sort of like a, sort of a state of the union, state of the Pleasantville from a police perspective. I mean, we hear when there's a major event, obviously we're in the know. But just in general, if there are trends, you know, things that you're noticing that it might be helpful for us to be aware of so that we can be more responsive to the community. You know, I, I, is, is that, does that make sense to you, what I'm, what I'm saying?
No, I mean, I, I think that's, I think that's a great idea. And this wasn't actually something I considered because a lot of times what will happen is, is we'll start to see a problem, either a problem area or a problem situation that's starting to sort of present itself. And it's difficult for us, you know, we could potentially do an e-blast, but that's usually for more of a an immediate situation rather than, you know, so for us to be able to say, hey, we're seeing a lot of kids on the field at the high school or we're seeing a lot of, you know, a lot of cell phone usage behind the wheel. And we would like to make sure that we're alerting the community that we're seeing it and we, we, we need to find a way to address it and try to get the, the community's assistance with that. I think that's a tremendous idea.
I think that would be helpful because you have eyes and ears out there in a way that is unique. And so it would be interesting to see what you're picking up on that we are likely not aware of.
Yeah, absolutely. Great. Thank you.
Thanks.
It would also be great in those meetings to maybe start to slowly, slowly introduce us to members of the force. Cause I think as Paul mentioned, you know, a lot of us don't actually know all the people who work here.
Sure. Yep. Yep.
All right. Sounds good. Thank you, Chief. Then first event on our regular schedule in just a few minutes is the promotion ceremony for James Charletti to detective. You will chat about that?
Actually, to Mr. Vinjomori's point, it was the former chief, James's father, Tony Charletti, who used to take us individually to the Rotary meetings when he was a member of the Rotary Club. And so so this could be sort of, you know, sort of the 21st century way that we we continue that tradition, so.
So there's Tony signing on. So of course, the hazard, Eric, in having mentioned that is that we'll ratchet up the stakes for you to join the Rotary Club.
Yes.
And in a post-pandemic time, you'll have to reprise Tony's role at the pancake breakfast.
You can wash the dishes like I used to do. That was my ultimate dishwashing chairman.
He hadn't been in the game long enough to be allowed to cook pancakes, right?
I got fired from that. Had the heat too high.
I will, if that's my job, I will bring a large stack of paper plates.
Ah, no, cheater.
Right in the recycling bin.
Got to go with the China.
All right. So we've got five minutes before our regular meeting. Do you think, Eric, that's enough to jump ahead to that last item on the work session about the schedule for?
Yep. So just to get it on the board's radar, tax grievance night this year, Tuesday, February 16th, it falls early. But the governor has passed an executive order to allow us to do this via Zoom. So
Still required to be three hours?
Yes. So we will get a calendar invite for that, but just to mark everybody's calendar. And then on Friday, we sent out the budget schedule, a series of budget meetings. It's actually attached to the agenda item. We're essentially going to be meeting every Monday in March. Let me just pull it up quickly. And of note, it's every Monday and then the first the first week in March, we'd be meeting the Monday and Tuesday in order to fit all the budget work sessions in. And the detailed schedule is attached. And again, we'll plan to meet, some of the bigger departmental budgets, we were planning to do on off-meeting nights. So we don't have a hard stop.
Right.
And then the smaller departments will plan to do in the work session, regular scheduled work session. So any of the board members sees an issue, you know, just let me know.
Yeah. So there's that Excel file attached in Novus. Everybody should download it and I mean, would it be helpful to folks for these items to become Outlook invites? What do you think?
I think we can handle it.
Yeah, no problem to send it out as Outlook. We can do that tomorrow.
Okay. Well, not only that, then can I also ask when you get an Outlook invite, affirmatively respond, because then we can all see who has responded, who's able to come and who may not be. For example, tax grievance night is one of them where we have to have a quorum. So we need to be sure that we've got it. All right.